Alright.
I only got nine pages.
Uh. Huh?
Wasn't it thirty eight?
No.
No, no, there are.
This part is, I had ten pages.
Oh, okay.
You might not have.
Okay, you have anything here? I got a copy of this draft that's very produced.
Yup, I got, I got actually.
There's a two extra copies.
Do, do you guys have, uh, had copies?
I have two here.
Is it, what was in the board packet?
Yeah.
Alright, I've got it online.
Okay. You want a hard copy, there's a couple actually.
I got one here.
So, uh, as I indicated earlier, um.
Seem very.
All, uh, uh, the process today is to, and, and this should actually go pretty fast. Uh, you see the table of conference, co- uh, contents, but you can go right to the second page where it talks about the purpose. And, um, if you, if you had a chance to review this before we got here today, that will help be even more helpful. Um, but we, we take a look at these Roman numeral one, go through the different, um, letters that follow it. And if they're good, go the way they're at, we just circle it. So, um, meaning that everybody is at a hundred percent agree. If anybody, and I have notes on, on, uh. This little work session. And we're not gonna do this formally if somebody wants to talk unless we get in our business. Okay, but I know we won't be doing this. But for example, and I'm just jumping ahead a little bit, under Roman numeral two, I put a note in there, so. If anybody has any notes or any concerns about any paragraph, we just move on. And we say that one in for when, uh, everybody's present, including the administrator. So, uh.
Roger, can I say something and then I am gonna leave, but, um, I, I just want you guys all to know, this is nothing to do with me liking you or disliking you guys as, as board members. And it has nothing to do with, with that at all, and I don't have a real problem with the policy. I guess my biggest thing, and I told Roger this on our break, and I wanted it to be said in front of everybody. The problem I have is, I guess, the respect thing for Kelsey, and maybe I'm wrong, and that, and that's fine if I am, but that's how I feel right now that she should be involved in things like this. And, and for that reason is the only reason that I am gonna, gonna not stay. But I don't have a problem with anybody as board members, I don't at all, and I, I hope nobody feels that way by me wanting to. For me leaving has nothing to do with that, and it has nothing to do with this. I have no problem with this, I've read through this. I think there's things that definitely will have to be looked at, I have no problem with that. But my big thing, and, and I'm gonna say with my heart, is that Kelsey should be involved in this, and I understand from talking to Roger why. He wants to do this, but that's just where I'm at, and that's why I'm not gonna stay. So I appreciate everybody's respect for that, and, and, and that's where I'm gonna leave it, so.
So I, I do need to respond to the respect thing because this has nothing to do with disrespect.
Oh, absolutely.
No, and I don't say. I, I'm speaking. Um, when, when I first brought this up to Kelsey following the district six meeting, her initial reaction was, well, that's a board document, that's for you guys to do. And she didn't have any issue. Well, something changed, and then I assured her, we're, and I assured her last meeting, we're not gonna cover anything that isn't boilerplate, covered by statute. Uh, if there's any question, we move on. And so she will have, uh, she will be respected and, and we do want her, uh, her input in this. But there are some things that don't require any discussion whatsoever, and those are the ones we wanna tick off so that we don't have to spend more time on, on the next. So I, again, I'm gonna ask you to reconsider and say, but if you wish to leave, um, by all means.
I, I am gonna leave, but I guess, I don't even care if it's about this, I'm just saying in a working session in general. I, I, I'm not even pointing out this document, I'm just saying in a work session in general, Kelsey should be in the room because she is the administrator, and that's just. The way I feel, that's why I said it has nothing to do with this document, I don't have a problem with that, but.
And we made a lot of efforts to try to get this going.
Right.
Because the schedules, uh, just didn't work, and this was an opportunistic time for us to get some minutia out of the way, so.
And I, 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 Mr. Chair, I.
Yeah.
Re- reply to, I, I feel no disrespect to Kelsey in doing this, and I've talked to Kelsey about this. I know she wants to be here and would like us to postpone it, this seems like a good time to do it. And I feel real comfortable that we can just discuss something, this, i- this is a board document. And even though administrator, it'd be very important that administrator be part of work sessions, I, I, but again, each work session is different. And this is a matter of, uh, the four of, five of us ideally could sit down and talk about this, even though she can't be here, just to kinda go through some of this, so we have. Uh, we don't have to take up more of your time later on, by not being here now and you're leaving, you're gonna miss out on it. So we'll have to bring you up to speed too, probably at the next meeting, but I just wish you could, we just move forward and, and try to keep everybody informed. This is just reviewing a document, and that's all we're doing is reviewing a document.
That we may or may not adopt.
And I don't feel that we need to show our loyalty to the administrator, uh, because there's no intent of disrespect here. And I know you feel real that you think that you, you have to leave because of her. But, uh, she's administrator, she's an important person to our community, and, and important person to the board, and, and we do need her. We are just talking about reviewing a, a, a document together, and not making any decisions, and we can't make any decisions. And not get into the weeds, and anybody says, oh, wait, I wanna say that for later, okay, you know, just trying to save some time as a board, and unfortunately. The, the intent and a, a good feeling I had going into us was it's gonna be pulling the board together even more, that we can sit down and go through this. And I still think we can do this, and we can work as a team, as a board, and that we can just review this together. And not, if the person doesn't wanna make a comment, they don't have to, and then, uh, you know, Kelsey will be able to zoom this or go back and see this, and. And we'll get together and, and we'll go over with her then, so. Yes, I would like her there, and, and I wish, but I don't think that it, it's, this whole thing is kind of almost getting blown out of proportion. You know, we're just, I just wanna look at some of this document that we talked about doing, and we all kind of agreed upon, so.
Oh, we're.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not. Um, thank you very much. Alright. See you later.
Bye, Dale.
Alright, is everybody clear on the, uh, process here? Okay, so I'll, we'll just start with the overview, uh, under Roman numeral one, letter A, I have no notes, I have no, um. Reason to change the purpose and the statements in those three paragraphs in the, uh, in the, in the purpose for these guidelines. Does anybody else have a reason to, uh, amend or, uh, save this for another, uh, time of discussion?
Well, um, I would, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd appreciate if you just went over this to some degree, uh, since it is being recorded, recorded, and the public can see what we're doing and the importance of this. And this is what this is all about, why we're doing this, is that, uh.
Do you wanna, you want me to read?
Yeah.
Read it verbatim, okay.
Yeah.
So the purpose, the Kennewa County Board of Commissioners is the body charged by law with developing policies which guide the affairs of Kennewa County. The county board operates as a deliberative and legislative assembly, meeting to discuss and determine the direction and politics of the county within the confines of state and federal law, that's important. The county board functions within the statutory framework of Minnesota law, general duties, powers, and responsibilities are found in Minnesota state statutes. Especially but not exclusively, chapter three seventy, three seventy-three, and three seventy-five. Minnesota statutes supersede all bylaws, rules, and policies established by the board. Yet, the operating rules and guidelines for Kennewa County Board of Commissioners are intended to facilitate the transaction of business by the county board and its committees. The following principles shall guide the county board in its interpretation and application of the rules. So I guess I would ask, having read that, is there any reason that would have to be revisited at any other time? In our people, the, the people here, or the three of us?
Oh, looks like it really describes our responsibilities.
So what I would do if, if Duane agrees?
Well, I, I, I'm okay. I, I mean, I don't have.
We're not boiling on this, but yeah, you have these questions.
Yeah, they, and, and they may, but.
Or they can go through it on their own.
For those of us who met here today, uh, I'd ask the note taker to circle one A as done and dusted.
Okay.
For those that are here, okay? Uh, B, Statement of Principles, the operating rules intend to strike a procedural balance that considers all principles and enunciates a specific process. By which these principles interact and work. The rules are representative of the organization's vision, mission, and core values. Kennewa County has implemented a comprehensive statement of organizational principles. The seven essential components of these principles include governing Kennewa County. Elected officials work in tandem with a strong, professionally managed workforce to accomplish the goals and objectives of the county. Two, to commit to our customers, uh, to co- commitment to our customers. Kennewa County government will provide fiscally prudent, risk, risk sensitive, cost effective solutions with the objective, uh, being to serve those who use our services to the best of our ability. Number three, commitment to staff, county, Kennewa County government is committed to providing a positive and healthy work environment. We're committed to preparing and educating our workers to provide quality services. Number four, expectations of each other. We expect honesty, integrity, and commitment to the values of our organization without regard for position or title. Number five, leading county govern, our goal is to create an organizational culture which fosters creativity, responsibility, and willingness to take reasonable risks. With an accept, with an acceptance of responsibility, accountability, and authority. Number six, measuring government performance, we will monitor key performance indicators in an effort to continuously improve our services to our citizens. Open government, number seven, the county board and Kennewa County will, will be recognized as an organization with a high standard of excellence. We will accomplish this engaging the citizens and local government agencies by being as transparent as the law allows us. Using all media types to present easy to understand documents. Any, anything, go ahead.
Uh, do you know where this came from? This, this, uh, area B, how these were developed, um.
This is gonna be a little speculation on my part, for some reason Nobles Colony came up. We went over to Nobles Colony and.
And that looked very similar what they had.
You may be looking at a, a very similar or the same document.
It's.
I don't know that for sure, but for some reason, um, 'cause I remember when we did the, uh. Remote meetings during COVID, uh, Nobles Colony came up that time.
Um, if I may, um, I, I, I'm just wondering, are any additions to that? I can't think of any right now, but we certainly could look at this, but I think it's a good document for the forward that we're looking at transparency, our roles as an electoral official.
So, so do you wanna change anything now, park it, or circle?
Oh, I think we circle it with the idea that, uh, maybe a footnote that, uh, we could add to a number eight or a number nine. I have a discussion if there's further, because like you said, there's a couple of people missing, and you may think of something that else would be in there, or that, that were, should have been included.
Um, so then I'm gonna suggest that we do not circle this one because, uh, for the very reason you said, there might be more added to it later. And in all transparency, if somebody wants to talk about additions, let's do it later, so we won't circle B in my opinion. Okay, you guys okay with that?
Doesn't matter to me, but, yeah, I'm okay with it, I just can't think of anything right off, offhand, but.
Letter C, effective date, these rules and guidelines should become effective upon passage of the county board. That's good. Once we pass it. So we can circle C. However, under C, under the amendments, I have some notes, so I would say, if anybody has any notes or any concerns, you want me to continue to read them even though?
Yeah, we, we, we might.
I don't.
I think it just, it just.
As long as I got some.
Being really, really transparent, I think.
Amendments to the operating rules, any member of the county board may initiate action to amend the operating rules. Amendments to the operating rules may also be initiated by the county administrator. During the statutory meeting, that's our first meeting of the year, um, the county board shall review and amend if necessary and adopt the operating rules for the year. And I put a note in here and I won't read my comments. At any time throughout the year, the county board may amend or suspend the operating rules by an affirmative vote of the members. Changes shall be effective immediately upon passage. The stat- statute references, references included in the text are current as the adopt, as of the adoption of the operating rules. Any changes in statute or law affecting the rules are effective immediately and will be reflected in the next adopted, adopted, updated rules. Alright, so we won't circle that one because I had some footnotes or comments.
You just don't wanna, okay.
Go ahead, as a matter of, like.
Serious. Is it matter of like, under B, do you want me to put like, a square or something, see if it's future, like?
As long as we know the designation between what these three commissioners have, uh, decided is, doesn't need any further discussion, or any.
What would be the third thing? We, we, we never kinda like, approve what you mean, like, well, we're good, and then the other one would be for discussion, is there a third?
Uh, uh, I think it was more, as I brought up, it was, just if anybody else had something to add to it, but I'm comfortable.
I think there's only two. This body's either done with it, or we wanna have further discussion about it, okay, so we don't circle it the default as it comes back to another work session.
So then I, I probably would just not, just leave it alone, and then I, I'm just gonna go make a note of that.
Okay.
Are.
Okay.
Based on the three people that are.
I have nine. The nine circled ones are.
For, for further discussion.
Yeah.
Number.
And there might be others too, because even the ones we circled, the two missing members who chose not to come today might want to have a discussion. Uh, Roman numeral three, county board organization, under letter A, membership, the board of commissioners consists of five members. Uh, elected from single member districts, a portion, uh, a portion on the basis of population is provided by law. Nothing we can do about that, we can circle that one safely?
Uh, I don't have.
Are you missing that page?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are a couple of these were there.
Uh, yeah. So probably didn't feed through the document feeder.
Then you're gonna have to read through them all, well, actually, I can pull it up online too.
Do you have yours mine?
I think so.
Yours missing?
Mine was thicker.
Okay.
How about this one? That, that's that one that you sent us all.
Oh, from, uh, the AMC. Alright, so I will read them, uh, as you get, but the first one is basically statutorily defined, you know, how, the, how the five commissioners are made. So we should be able to circle A, including the procedures to follow in the event that a redistricting is needed, are established pursuant to. Uh, pursuant to Minnesota state statute three seventy-one point zero two five. We have no control over that, so we should be able to circle that one, correct? Okay.
Which one did you just?
Um, Roman numeral three B.
Hang on, hang on.
You missing page two?
Page two.
Yeah, I missed it. Do you have a complete set?
You wanna sit, oh, yeah, you need the complete set, don't you?
Yeah.
You have a server here?
What are you gonna use? What are you? Just run and copy, uh, page two.
No, what she did is, all the odd nu- all the even numbers are not copied.
Really? Well, we're gonna need.
I know I have.
You don't want that one.
This one I don't.
Is that one clean?
Why underline? Page two.
Just go ahead and print the even pages, I don't know why should we have done that. But these are, uh, well, Mel, these, so, but we'll get back, so we can keep moving here, we'll tell you which ones we circled. Pages, alright, 'cause this stuff is almost all. Do you guys have your even numbered pages?
I'm looking through the board packet.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's where I got it.
Okay. So we can keep moving here.
Yep.
Uh, because terms of office, in terms of letter C, in terms of office, the terms of each board member is four years except as otherwise established pursuant, pursuant to three seventy-five point zero three. Statutorily defined. Good there? Uh, D, a vacancy in the office of county commissioner is filled in one of two ways pursuant to Minnesota state statute. Um, three seventy-five point one oh one, a vacancy may, vacancy may be filled at a special election to be held not fewer than thirty nor. Nor more than ninety days after the vacancy occurs. A special primary or special election may be held on the same day as a regular primary or regular election, but the special elections shall be held not fewer than fourteen days after the special primary. A person elected in a special election shall take office immediately after receipt of the certificate. Uh, of election and upon filing the bond, uh, fil- filing the bond and taking the oath of office, and shall serve the remainder of the unexpired term. If the vacancy occurs fewer than sixty days before the general election preceding the end of the term, vacancy shall be filled by the person elected at the general election for the ensuing term. That person shall take office immediately after receiving the certificate of election, filing the bond, and taking the oath of office. A vacant, a vaca- vacancy may be filled by board appointment at a regular or special meeting. The appointment shall be evidenced by resolution entered into the minutes and shall continue until an election is held. All elections to fill vacancies shall be for unexpired terms. If the vacancy occurs before the first day to file affidavits of candidacy for the next county general election and more than two years remain on the unexpired term. A special election shall be held in conjunction with the county general election. Appointed person shall serve until the qualification of the successor elected to fill the unexpired part of the term at the special election. If the vacancy occurs on or after the first day to file affidavits of candidacy for the county general election, or when less than two years remain in the unexpired term. There shall be no special election to fill the vacancy, and the appointed person shall serve the remainder of the unexpired term. And until a successor is elected and qualified at the county general election. Statutorily defined, um.
They have to be filled. For less than sixty days, it has to be filled or. But it's a shall, because shall means stay out.
Yeah.
Whatever the statute says.
Yep. Well, that's based, based on the majority vote of the, the board then, right?
Uh, it's following statute.
Yeah.
When that time comes up, we dig into the weeds and look at the shells and may. Uh, yeah. On officers, um, the county board at its statutory meeting, the first Tuesday after the first Monday of each year, elects from its members a chair and vice chair. The chair presides at the county board meetings, decides on questions of order, subject to the vote of the county board. And signs all documents requiring a signature, requiring a signature on the board's behalf. The chair's signature attested by the county administrator is binding as the signature of the county board's. The county board elects from its membership a vice chair at the same time and place and in the same manner provided for the election of the chair. The vice chair performs the duties of the chair when the chair is unable to perform those duties. If the chair and the vice chair are absent from any meeting, the members present shall choose one of their members as a temporary chair. And all documents requiring the signature of the county board shall be signed by a majority of it and attested to by the county administrator. Institute statute three seventy-five point one three. At the statutory meeting, and if applicable during the year, the chair of the county board shall have the authority to recommend committee chairs, appointments of members of the county board to standing. Uh, committees, and other county board member appointed committees, organization, and group subject to, uh, board approval. Now, I did make some notes here, so, um, I don't think we should circle three. Uh, I just wanna stop here for a second. If a county board in, Shane can correct this if he wants, but if a, uh, if a county board adopts Robert's Rules of Order. As their operating procedure, and you'll see that later in here, then Robert's Rules of Order, if, if we adopt a policy. We can supersede a Robert's Rules, is that correct, Shane?
Yes.
Okay, so, is part of why I made a note here, um, regarding, and I think there might have been some editorializing or some changes that might have been made, um, by the previous administrator. So anyway, I, 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 I don't wanna, uh, do E because I think there's more conversation. Letter F.
Yeah, no, I think it's just, he's just, I said, yes, I know informally, electing the chair and the vice chair, you know, there's kind of an informal procedure we go through, but this lays it out that that is the election process.
Yeah. So, letter F, compensation, county board members receive as compensation for services an annual salary set. As set by resolution of the county board, the salary must be established prior to the end of the preceding year and effective January first of the new year. The resolution shall contain, um, statement of the new salary as defined on an annual basis. And must be published in the official county newspaper and one other newspaper of the county. Institute statute three seventy-five point zero zero five, or point zero five five. Prior to the effective date of the new salary, each county board member shall have the option to accept or reject any salary increase in writing in a form prescribed by the county board. The county board members shall also receive a per diem for attendance at the assigned committee meetings. The per diem rate must be established prior to the end of the preceding year, and it's effective, and is effective January first of the new year. A copy of the per diem eligible commissioner duty shall be established annually by the board at its organizational meeting and kept on file in the county administrator's office. Per diem shall not be paid for regular scheduled board meeting. So, um, that's what gave me the idea of when this document, uh, might have taken place, because we haven't had per diem now for what, three years? Yeah, so, that, that last paragraph doesn't apply anymore, but I don't think we circle it because we wanna point that out.
Well, and, but there are so, a couple committees that do have per diems. And there, there's some language to that effect, the board passed that, those committees, whoever served on them can still take that per diem in addition.
And that's a distinction between our out of.
So that wouldn't have to be in here, because they'll, they'll probably disappear in time.
I'm Westland, oh, you're, you're, uh, United Community Action.
Did I give you a per diem?
I, I, I think there's several exactly.
Yeah.
Well, then we gotta find out.
Anyway, we gotta talk about that one.
And then I think the workforce thing.
So Mel, we did not circle E, or we will not circle F?
The workforce one you're on, Duane, I think they have a per diem.
Yeah, they, they have.
And you can choose to take it.
Let's, let's not even discuss, uh, options. Yeah, I know.
Okay.
See how much money you lost.
Yeah.
Uh, letter G, county board budget, the county board is allocated, ha- is allocated an annual budget which includes salary per diem, benefits, conferences, conferences. Meetings and related expenses, uh, example, telephone office supplies. I think we, uh, should have some discussion on, uh, and this is the budget for the board itself. Um, so I, 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 I don't wanna circle letter G, and like I said, anybody doesn't wanna circle, we don't circle. County board meetings, general policies, A, we're on Roman numeral four, letter A. The following general policies apply to all meetings of the county board. Cell phones shall be put on silent, not vibrate or ring. Business casual attire or better shall be required, uh, at all, for all staff, uh, in board meetings, um.
How do you define casual business casual?
Uh, you can go on. You can go on internet and you can get that, but, um.
I guess complicated.
This is okay, she said, yeah.
You wanna talk about it? Then we won't circle.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
So we won't circle letter E.
Sorry, I think one did pass it. What was the last one you circled?
Um.
Can you, so, can you maybe just, I'm up to speak, can you just tell me which ones?
From page two?
Um, wait, please.
Oh, you'll go back, yeah, while you left.
Circle purpose.
Okay.
We circled effective date. And that's why I left normal maturity, um, room here.
Uh, we circled, uh, A, B.
Uh, membership?
And C, on the overview, Roman numeral one.
That's the first page, he, Mel was here.
Oh, this is the first one.
Statement of Principles?
No, 'cause that's one you said you wanted to add too.
Oh, that's one Corky said, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're right, you did see, and then, did I, and then, and then the amendment to the operating rules, uh, Roman numeral two.
Under Roman numeral two, um, there was some notes in there, so, so Roman numeral two, we should not have, uh, circle.
And then you went to Roman.
Roman numeral three, county board organization.
Yeah.
You can circle A, B, C, and D.
A, B, C, D.
On E, officers do not circle. On F, compensation, do not circle. And county board budget, have we talked about that one? Yes, do not circle G. Do not circle Roman, uh, Roman numeral four A.
Do not? Oh, that's right for that.
That's where we are.
Yeah, and so now we're, we're ready to proceed at, uh, letter B, regular meetings.
So, so our, our rule of twenty-five dollar fine if our cellphone goes off, then there's mad.
That's not, that's not, what, if you don't talk about it?
No, no, I don't wanna put that in there.
Nobody's ever paid it, but me.
I think it was.
It works, yeah, yeah.
Phone kept going off. You know, if, if you go into a courtroom, they'll say what you can and can't do.
Well, actually, we covered it.
And so.
For the, I mean.
Outside, the sign should be put outside, you know, turn off.
Yeah.
In all fairness, I should be announcing, uh, that.
Yeah, I wondered how we should progress it so that it's clear to everybody.
It, it should be part of my greeting almost, that, uh, and I forget about it too. Anyway, um, Roman numeral four B, regular meetings, at the annual organizational meeting, the county board. Shall adopt a, a schedule of regular board meetings for the upcoming year. The schedule will be included, uh, the schedule will include the location, date, time of the meetings during the year to schedule. The schedule will be included, uh the schedule will include the location, date, time of the meetings during the year to schedule. May be amended by vote of the county board, such as we're doing next month. Unless otherwise stated, all regular readings of the county board will be held in the commissioner uh commissioner's boardroom. At the Health and Human Services Building at twenty two hundred twenty third Street Northeast, Willmore, Minnesota. All regular readings of the county board are open to the public. So that was B. Any any reasons to have more discussion about that? Pretty straightforward. So we can circle B. Statutory meeting.
I'm curious. So what you're saying is is that this is what this group that other people can just bring about.
Uh, when we re meet again, if if they have a reason why they wanna. No, we're not making decisions. So if they wanna a address uh something in here, they can. The county, the county board meets in the board of commissioners room in the Kenneway County Government Center. Uh for the transactional business on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in January. The county board transacts organics organizational business during this during this meeting, including. Administrator administration of the oath if required, election of officers, appointment of board committee positions. Appointments to serve on interagency boards, appointment to serve on in-county boards, appointments to serve as liaisons. Appointments of citizens to serve on advisory committees, select the local uh legal newspaper. The schedule of the regular meetings and any other business as necessary. All other duties to be assigned is that last statement.
I have a question, uh if required, uh taking the oath of office, is that required or not?
It is when you have an election. So this year will be, next year will be.
Oh.
There won't be an election.
Oh, so then we wouldn't do it. Okay, I otherwise I thought we could just delete that.
No, no.
Okay.
Or if there's an appointment in here, then you would have to do it on another year.
Yes.
Or it'll happen at the next meeting. Are we good to go there on C? Is that a work session or is that a? Do we make decisions at that meeting? You know what? Let's uncircle it then because um. Then we can clarify that. And that's the reason we're doing this is is if there's. Uncertainty and there's a couple of places where it's like, this isn't really clear, so.
Does that mean you're going back to four B?
No, where it says to me where you meet at.
Oh, so it's four B, not uh not C. So C.
No, but it did for C it doesn't mean. Oh, all regular.
But it says unless otherwise stated.
So it's covered.
Okay, so just.
Yeah, I think we're good as uh as Dwayne points out, unless otherwise stated.
So C.
Yeah. And we have moved downstairs, I think.
Yeah.
So we're on um. B and C. Excuse me. Next one is uh letter D, open meeting law. All meetings of the Kenneway County Board uh committees are subject to the open meeting law, Minnesota state statute, yada, yada, yada. Uh, a meeting governed by Minnesota state statutes may be conducted by interactive television as long as the following conditions are met. According to Minnesota state statute thirteen D point oh two. All commissioners participating in the meeting can see and hear one another. All testimonies being presented and all discussions at any location where a member is present. Number two, members of the public pre present at each lo present at each location. Can see and hear all discussions, testimony and votes of the commissioners. Um, I'm gonna come back to two. At least one commissioner is physically present at the regular meeting. Each location where a member is present is open and accessible to the public. If interactive television is used to conduct the meeting, members of the public shall be allowed to monitor the meeting electronically from a remote location to the extent possible. Uh persons choosing to monitor a meeting electronically may be required to pay fees incurred for additional uh connections.
Does that mean all the new, I mean, there's been some changes about Zoom meetings. Uh this means that those requirements there? Shane, with you.
Yeah, and I have a question about my next planning zone. Gonna be in room B of the Intercontinental Hotel.
What if you're uh, for me, it's like a security for my personal belongings. For safer on vacation. And then you say, well, I'm down here. To me, it's like inviting people to come to your house to go shopping. So I I.
Let's not circle B.
But I think the law says you have to do that or whatever sort of.
Well.
That's gotta be discussed.
Maybe Shane can update us at the next next meeting, not necessarily now, but make sure we get it.
No, I believe that the idea of it's whatever the law said.
So the situation I'm gonna have in December is I'm gonna be at the AMC conference. And we have planning and zoning meeting that we carried over an item that had a lot of discussion. And Eric would like me to call in. Well, according to number two here, it says. Members of the public present at each location, let's say somebody wants to join me for this meeting in my room or whatever. And they have to be able to see and hear all discussions. I would do YouTube. And I don't think our zoning meetings are on YouTube. And I don't see cameras in here anymore so that if somebody's looking over my shoulder. In my room wanting to participate in that, they aren't gonna be able to see the room. I I don't think I can. Will you check that one out for me? Cause I don't think I can participate in that one uh based on.
I mean, you can, you can watch it.
But I can't participate. I can't vote.
I think as a citizen, you could maybe, I don't know if citizens can even have.
The public hearing is done.
I get a little some of the committees on my board.
Believe that one open and if. Appreciate that. In fact, you'd maybe get to me back to me before of the conference.
Yeah.
And it's guided by statute, so.
And and Kelsey might have some good input on that too.
Uh, letter E, closed meetings. The county board may hold closed meetings as authorized by the Minnesota state statute thirteen D uh point oh three. And thirteen D point oh five. Business which may be considered in closed session is in accordance with the attorney client privilege. Consider strategy for labor negotiations to review the performance of the county administrator or as otherwise required or permitted by the Minnesota open meeting law. Before closing a meeting, the county board will state on the record the specific grounds permitting the meeting to be closed and describe the subject to be discussed. That's pretty straightforward.
Does that address closed meetings if if the person uh does not uh is fine with it being open, it can be open, correct?
Yeah, that's that's the issue covers. So we can circle that one. Special emergency meetings. Procedures to schedule any special or emergency meeting shall be in accordance with Minnesota state statute thirteen D point oh four. Emergency meetings may be called and a good faith effort to provide notice of the meeting shall be made by telephone or a written message. Special meetings shall be preceded by three days' notice, including a posting of the meeting notice and either one. Mailed and delivered to uh notice to persons who have requested such notice or two publication of the notice in the official newspaper. Adjourned or reconvened meetings may be held at any specific time, date and place the board may adopt without additional notice. However, the time. However, the time, date and place must be publicly specified by the board prior to adjourning and me and adjourning to me. Members of the county board are entitled to ten days' notice of uh board meetings. A meeting cannot be held without such notice unless each member has consented to holding a special meeting. Minnesota state statute three thirty five point zero seven. The county board may schedule work sessions, retreats, forums or additional meetings at such times. And concerning such such subjects and may be established through board resolution or motion. The schedule of such meetings shall be maintained in the county administration office. Work sessions and other informal meeting of the board not regularly held should be subject to the same notice requirements of the open meeting law. A joint meeting with the Kenneway County Board and and any other political subdivision. May be held within boundaries of either subdivisions as will be specified. And I underlined some things about work sessions, so I we wouldn't circle F. Uh, letter G, public hearings. From time to time, the county board conducts formal public hearings. In addition to those required by the law, the county board may hold public hearings on matters of business when it decides that such hearings are in the best interest of the general public. Or is or issues under consideration. The order of business for public hearings generally follows this procedure. The presiding officer opens the hearing and states the purpose, brief description of the uh of issue by county staff or other appropriate persons. Presentation, if applicable, by affected or interested persons, open comments by members of the general public, reading of the written comments submitted. Public hearings closed by resolution and motion, discussion by the county board, decision of the county board. At any time during the process, the county board may address any questions as deemed appropriate. County board chair may alter the public hearing procedures as needed to assure that the hearings are conducted in an orderly. Orderly, fair and expeditious manner, including establishing reasonable time limits of three to five minutes for speakers. Uh individually or in on each side of the issue uh before the board. Additional time to speak can be approved by consensus of the board. Rules adopted for public hearing procedures are intended to promote an orderly discussion to give every person. An opportunity to be heard and to ensure that no individual is embarrassed by exercising their right to free speech. Individuals making comments shall first be their first name and address. This is required for an official record uh of the public here. And I made some notes there, so I don't know that um we should be circling that one. Letter H. Audience participation at board meeting. It is the intention of these rules to support the interests of general public in following board business during meetings. In an effort to encourage efficiency and early resolution of issues. The county board recommends that citizens first contact staff to try to resolve matters before coming formally to the county board meeting. In addition, the county board recommends that new items of business or concerns be first considered by the appropriate committees. And then the board uh chair may allow audience participation under. Other individual agenda items if he or she determines it is necessary to help facilitate the board's discussions on the item. Can I stop there for just a second? Um, I think that means that if we're considering something from the EDC and there's an EDC person out there that we. Can call them up for clarification. Is that how you understand that?
Yeah, I I actually I'm understanding from that point of view that the chair has the authority to uh allow somebody to speak or not. And uh even though we generally don't do that, there might be certain circumstances and we have some flexibility. Shane, would that work?
No, that's what that's saying.
And so then um the last paragraph, questions directed to the board during audience. Questions directed to the board during audience participation will not be answered immediately. However, all appropriate questions will be responded to in a timely and effective manner by the board and or county staff. I had no objections to that one. Anybody else? We can circle A.
So this doesn't address them. Okay, this is uh part of the agenda. Isn't this not like a public incumbent?
Well, as and and.
That would be.
I change my mind if Shane says, I'm gonna use an example here. The board chair may allow audience participation under other individual items. So when we leave our planning and zoning meeting. Um. Uh applicants are told that that the final decision is made by the county board. And they can attend that meeting, but they can't speak in it. But if they are in attendance and the county board has a question of something. And I, the chair would have the ability to say, you know, can you give clarification to that? Is that, am I understanding it that way? Okay, then I'm still good with it. All right, if you guys are. Quorum. A quorum is necessary for the transaction of business. Majority of the members of the board constitutes a quorum. And no business shall be transacted unless approved by a majority, three votes uh of the whole county board. Less than a majority of members may convene a meeting, but no business may be transact transacted. Each member participating in in the meeting by interactive television shall be considered present at the meeting for the purposes of determining. Of determining a quorum. I'm assuming that if we follow all the guidelines regarding uh interactive TV. Any county board member who for any reason anticipates or plans. An absence at any regular or special meeting is encouraged to contact the county administrator to indicate his or her planned absence. Um, I would have an addition to that, so I ask that we don't circle I. Role of the presiding officer. The presiding officer of the meeting is the chair. In absence of the chair, the presiding officer will be the vice chair. The duties and powers of the presiding officer include the following. Preside at all meetings of the county board, preserve order and decide questions raised by members subject to appeal. Subject to appeal to the to the board. Devote all questions regularly moved and to announce the result. Serve as a representative of the board in the execution of contracts, orders, resolutions, determinations and minutes of the board. The chair of the board may make a motion and has the same voting rights and responsibilities as the other members. Any, anybody wanna not circle J?
Oh, it looks like, no. I'm not sure if that would come into this. Uh some some areas have the chair vote last to break any possible ties. Would that be part of this or or?
You know what?
Is that up to the chair or do we need it?
I want to think you, I mean, cause this is a political body.
Yeah.
You'd be depriving the chair of vote essentially if you.
But I think what you're saying is it won't last.
Oh.
Or that just.
Oh, that that's a difference.
I think that's actually.
Oh, that's up to the chair.
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay.
So we can circle J.
That's all. Okay. I'm here for. Cheers. It's either call the vice board if there's a. Um tally that I. Name the commissioner and then they.
Addressing the chair, formal protocol used when speaking to the county board, the county board chair is addressed as uh Mr. or Madam Chair. Members of the county board are addressed as commissioner and then their last name. Any member of the county board, staff or members of the public may speak on any matter before the county board when recognized by the chair and within established procedures as outlined in the rules. When they say the rules, are we meaning either uh Robert's rules or uh. Policy amendments that we make to Robert's Robert's rules? You know Shane, can you tell from this? Either way, we have the rules. It's either Robert's rules or something that we modified with a policy rule.
Right.
So I think we can circle L. Right. Eight, county administrator.
I'm just think maybe we should just set this aside. We can read to it, but yeah. Uh yeah, I mean, this directly involves administrator, so.
No, M.
Or M, oh.
Oh, yeah. You want me to read it though first? I agree. Yeah, exactly. County administrator, county administrator designated shall attend all meetings of the county board. The county board, the county administrator um represents this and and this is one that uh well, yeah. I'll state my opinion uh when we revisit it. Uh, the county administrator represents the staff at the meetings. County administrator may participate in the discussion or recommend a resolution or action to the county board. Member of the board may call on the county administrator to participate in the discussion or provide a verbal recommendation on any subject any before the board. County administrator designated or written agenda. Uh, for all regular and special meetings of the county board. The county administrator or designate also, number one, record records the vote of each member on any questions submitted to the board. Two preserves and files all business acted upon by the board. Three certifies under seal of the county copies of any and all resolutions or decisions by the board. Four perform perform such further duties as designated by the board. And five, leads collaborative efforts across the county departments, county agency and across county lines. And there's some notes there, so we'll cer not circle. Um, letter uh room numero five, conduct of debate. Letter A, principles. Rule of parliamentary practice, body and then Robert rules of order shall govern the board in all cases applicable. Except as modified by the rules herein and applicable by Minnesota state statutes. And I would like to have uh some discussion on that, so I would circle A. Parliamentarian. Rules of order governing county board meetings shall be referred to the county board chair for interpretation and enforcement. The county board chair may consult with board members and or the county attorney in interpreting and deciding upon rules of question of order. I'm good with that. I think we do that.
Shane, is that tone okay with you?
Circle.
Yeah.
Role of the chair. The chair shall preside over the debate, ensuring equality and fairness in discussion. If necessary, the chair may restate or ask the county administrator or designate to restate motion. Who made the motion and who seconded the motion or to announce the role of vote.
Okay.
Suspension of the rules. Any member of the board may move. Yes, I'm sorry, no. Um, letter D, suspension of the rules. Any member of the board may move for a suspension of the rules. At any time during the debate and in order. If in order and duly seconded, the board will vote on the request. If there is general consensus, the board may suspend the rules without the formality of a motion. Such action may occur at any time. I'm gonna just uh ask you Shane if we should talk about that one. It's a little confusing to me.
Isn't that just following Roberts rules of order?
Well, I think earlier it says we follow, on the very beginning, we said we follow Robert rules unless we decide otherwise.
But where was that?
Um, I think at the bottom of the previous page.
Is that the one we put aside for?
Yeah, letter A, principles.
It should also, should that say what? Version or whatever.
The latest version is probably what we should say in there.
But that's so, that was one up for discussion for next time. Right, okay.
Yeah, because we didn't circle. All right. So. We just went back to the.
But circle B or not circle?
Um.
Cause we have more discussion on Robert's rules.
Well, my only question is, and Shane, this is probably in Robert's rules and maybe you know or maybe don't. There are a few votes that require a two thirds vote, not a majority vote. Is it possible this is one of them? To suspend your vote? I think it's just majority. But we could leave it as uh. I mean, maybe don't circle it. We could just clarify it as uh as in Robert's rules unless we modify it.
It's something we don't use often, but maybe we should, you know, if we get a better understanding and feel more comfortable.
Let's not circle D. Uh, letter E, main motion. The main motion shall be considered by the board. A member may make only one motion at a time. Board member or members may present an initial motion on the resolution and subsequently debate the question or the board member. May call upon staff for additional information prior to introduction of the motion. The introduction of the main or substantive motion is out of order while another main motion is pending. While the question is under debate, no other motion shall be received or entertained except for the procedural motions permitted in the rules. Pretty much straight out of Robert's rules, right Shane? Yep. Uh, a second. Letter F, second required. All motions before the board shall be seconded prior to consideration by the board. The second may occur after a brief informal discussion. Subsequent to the most, the second of the motion, formal debate may ensue between the members of the board prior to the formal vote being called. Um, I don't wanna circle that one because there's uh some question about in small bodies whether a second. Uh, is required for uh to initiate debate. Um, letter G, amended motion. Any motion may be amended at any time before it's adopted. The amended motion shall have precedence over an existing motion. And may be discussed prior to being voted upon. If the amendment motion, if the amended motion fails, the main motion may proceed for consideration. If the amended motion passes, the amended motion becomes the main motion and may proceed for consideration. Once an amended motion is voted upon, a second amended motion may be obtained. Straight out of Roberts. Good to circle G. Division of the question. Upon the request of any board member, a resolution and debate may be divided and separated into more than one action. Provided the chair rules that the resolution will allow such a division. Each of the, each of the resulting resolutions must be complete to allow independent consideration and action. How the hell does the chair know uh whether uh the resolution, it allows division?
I know, you've had some issues before where it's like, say, two items.
In the same resolution, like they're asking for basically the same thing and you wanna prove both this project or that project or issue.
The question then is like, do we, do we do this on one motion too?
Right.
It's giving you, it gives the chair the option, say, no, we're gonna do them all at a time. We're gonna divide, say, so and so, let's assume that one, he said, no, I think we should make the record clear.
Is this great?
I I remember a few times in the past who has a chair, okay Shane, what do you think?
Is this straight out of Roberts? Yeah, okay. As a chair, I would, you know. The only thing I would add to that is. In the interest of being safe, divide the question. So, you know, we could allow that. We could make a policy that says in the interest of uh of, so don't circle. Maybe we should.
Well, I think we are, I don't know.
Let's talk about it.
Okay, it seems fine with me.
Withdrawal motion after motion has been stated by the chair. It is deemed to be possession of the board, but may be withdrawn by the member introducing the motion at any time before a vote. The chair must accept or reject a withdrawal request. Motion cannot be debated or amended. If the motion is withdrawn, the effect is the same as has never been made. Straight out of Roberts, right?
The person that seconds it, don't we have to consider that or?
The with, the withdrawing. As long as we haven't voted yet, the the. Discussion procedure, letter J. Uh, following operating rules show guide debate. Number one, and I think in here, um, do we wanna circle the? Because there's one subset we're going on into one, two, three and four. Do we wanna circle those letters that are okay?
Sure, let's, let's go through.
Okay. Discussion procedure. Uh, any, number one, any commissioners desired to speak shall address the chair and not proceed until being recognized. When two or more members address the chair at the same time, the chair shall designate the order of the speaking.
That's, that's good, and that's something that's gotta work on.
Upon recognition of the chair, the board member making the motion has precedence to address the board first. With the except, with the option of explaining the reasons why the motion is made. Subsequently, the floor is open to any member of the board. There is no time limit for comments from individual board. I actually did that today, didn't I, on uh?
I did.
Yeah. I I explained, I made the motion for um. The uh ordinance change and I explained why. So that, there's an example. I, I'm good to circle it. Do I interview? Circle two. J two. A member once recognized shall not be interrupted when speaking unless it is, is to call that member to order. No member shall interrupt another in debate with or without, without his or her consent. To obtain such consent, he or she shall first address the chair. Straight out of Roberts rules. And that might mean that we could have circled J now.
I don't know, just.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, no, that we went to.
I think that might be our, one of our few times we have anything under the letters. Under letter K, a motion uh resolution shall be adopted or approved by the majority of the board. Circle that.
Do you have a question about death or that's per statute? So you're good with majority.
Okay, yeah, it's guided by statute. Procedural motion. In addition to the substantive motions, the following procedural motion shall be in order. This is a partial list of those motions from Robert rules that are most often used. It is not intended to be a complete list. These motions shall be considered in the following order of precedence as taken from Robert rules of order. Motion to adjourn, motion to recess, motion to suspend uh the rules, and then I had the question whether or not that's debatable. Motion, but Roberts would say, motion for division of the question, motion to defer. Motion lay on table, uh call of the previous question. Uh, motion to postpone to a certain time or date, motion to refer to committee, motion to amend, motion to reconsider. I think I would leave that one uncircled because I think we've used some wrong terminology in the past. We say, we've said, uh, I'd like to table this for the December third meeting and that should be, I'd like to postpone this. Any table motion should come back at the, at the same meeting that you're at. So just uh, let's leave that one. Uh, letter M, voting. It is the duty of every member to vote. Voting shall be called by the chair as those in favor signify by saying I uh vote and opposed use the same sign. The chair may request a roll call vote on any motion. Voting records are recorded as with all voting in favor. When you net, when a unanimous vote occurs and in favor against or abstained for issues not unanimous. By the county administrator or designate and duly noted in the minutes. It sounds like a run on question or sentence to me, but. Essentially saying that, you know, again by Roberts, allows abstention. But do we need a reason? So that's why, you know.
Well, and also I was wondering, the the roll call, uh requested roll call vote can be made by the chair. Uh, but can that be requested by any of the commissioners as well? Cause in the past, that's happened.
Let's not circle it then. We'll ask that question and.
Okay.
Another note for Shane to maybe check on Roberts. Or we can change it with our own policy. Uh, types of board action, resolution. County board takes formal action by resolution and associates statute three seventy three point O two. Action by a motion without reference to it being a resolution shall still be considered a resolution of the board. A motion may be introduced by any member of the county board. The main motion in the form of a resolution is the means by which a member may present a substant- substantive proposal to the county board for consideration and action. Since it is the basic motion for the transaction of business, only one subject may be considered at a time. And the main motion may be proposed only when no other motion is before the county board, see section five. Reference to uh board action in the meeting minutes being made with a motion shall be considered. Uh, the same time as uh if the action was made by resolution. Can we do that?
Yep.
So we can circle A. Any drive. The county board may take formal action by ordinance, Minnesota state statute three seventy five point five one, also by a motion. An ordinance is a legislative act prescribing general, uniform and permanent rules of conduct related to the affairs of the county. County board action shall be taken by ordinance when required by law to prescribe permanent rules of conduct which continue. Enforce until repealed or where such conduct is enforced by penalty. And we just kinda did that today. We amended. Uh, but you could also repeal it or not. Circle, circle that, we're good at that. General consensus. County board provides informal direction by consensus. The informal direction is most often used to provide staff with preliminary board perspective. On a matter which will require future formal action by resolution or ordinance. Informal direction is also used to provide additional insight into formal actions previously taken. Informal directions, standing alone does not establish board policy. That's pretty straightforward. You, a consensus is just an opinion essentially, a group opinion, right?
Yep. Well, you do that.
Adopted anything.
Weird.
Road and bridges, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Uh, so we circle C?
I know, I don't think so.
You don't circle?
Oh, yeah, we're okay. Sorry.
Letter D, policy development. Authority for the development of policies in Kennewa County is granted to the county board through Minnesota state chapter. Uh, statute, chapter three seventy three, county's powers, duties and privileges. Minnesota statute three seventy five, county boards and then other statutes. With the powers granted within these statutes, the county board may delegate certain authority as appropriate through board resolutions. These delegations of authority may be rescinded at any time by the board.
That's pretty clear.
It's not that clear to me. I'm, I don't know if that's what they say. We authorize the public works director to sign on behalf or if it's. Uh, uh changing policy. I I say let's not, let's not circle that one. Notice of board action, letter E. Any members of the board may introduce an item for consideration and action pursuant to general rules and operating procedure. A copy should be provided to the county administrator or design or designate as much advanced notice as reasonable and practical. Introduction of board action during the board meeting occurs by motion. And second, as a more fully set forth in section uh five. Board action included on the printed board agenda is referred to the board by the appropriate board committee or county staff. Unless they are included within one of the following categories, whereupon they may be considered by the board without ref- referral. Resolutions of commendation, resolutions which no member objects to being considered. Resolutions on a matter of urgent nature or some consequences or crisis uh will uh will result due to inaction at the meeting. Uh, and in all cases, the items above considered without referral should be added to the agenda during the approval of the agenda. The county board may at any time refer an item or resolution to the appropriate committee or staff for further review and deliberation. I I think we should have a little discussion over that about, um, but. How we bring uh agenda items or. Items we want placed on the agenda. It's, it's covered by Roberts, but we can change it through policy. County board agenda, prepar- uh here we'll go into our. Preparation and distribution. The county administrator or designee shall cause preparation of the agenda. And supporting material for each regular and special meeting. Members of the board may request an item to be placed at the agenda by the. By informing the county administrator or designate prior to Thursday of the week, prior to the meeting. Additions to the agenda that are routine administrative items, time sensitive or informal informational may be added by the county administrator. Prior to the meeting. These additions should be emailed to the board as soon as possible in advance of the meeting. Copies of the agenda and supporting material board uh board packet are made available to county staff, public and media as appropriate. Distribution list is maintained in the county administration office. Members of the public who are interested in the following issues considered by the board may register their name and addresses. Uh, and email addresses if available with county administration to be placed on the agenda distribution list. Board packets will be provided to county board and staff electronically only. Board packets will generally be distributed by the Friday before a regular meeting. County board members are strongly encouraged to read board packets, review bills and ask questions of staff before the. Uh, board meeting occurs, occurs. The agenda and minutes are available on the Kennewa County website. I think there's plenty to discuss in there.
Well, it it it, the administrator is involved.
Yeah.
We will watch.
So we will, we will circle that one.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we're, we're. No, I, oh, I don't.
The newspaper.
We have.
Right?
Yeah, they're listed in there, but there's.
Saying new agenda is up.
But I mean, if uh. Jammed all from League of Minus, uh League of Women Voters says, hey, I wanna be on a permanent list to receive the packet. Then we have to do that.
We might.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. But they can just go online too, get it.
Right.
Just like anybody else, right?
I mean, there are watch star groups that.
Right, okay, uh, so we're not circling.
I was looking at the watch.
Letter, yes, what time is it?
Yep, so.
We, I think some of these went really fast at the very end, but um we just stopped.
Okay.
Order of business and we will stop at twenty minutes after. So somebody help me watch the clock.
Okay.
Um. Order of business, order of business for each regular being of the county board shall be as follows. Call to order, pledge of allegiance, approval of the last board minutes. Consent agenda, public appearances. Uh, that's a little bit different than the way we do it.
Really?
Uh, like public appearances, public hearing.
Oh, yeah, 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 that part.
So that, I don't think we should circle that. Um.
Sure.
All the items with content of the six, uh, that's, we're, we're gonna discuss it anyway, so. Maybe, it might, maybe in the interest of time, of course, Dwayne has uh. Made notes. Official records. County administrator or designee shall cause preparation of the official minutes of each meeting. Board meeting minutes shall be kept in accordance with all provisions of statute in order to provide an accurate. Uh, record of the county actions. The board is not intended to be a verbatim transcript of all discussions. Uh, and debate. The record is primarily a co- a compilation of the official action. The minutes of the county board shall be prepared and submitted for approval at the next succeeding county board meeting. A summary of the official proceedings of the county board meetings shall be published. A summary of the official proceedings of the county board meetings shall be published. In the official county newspaper Minnesota states actually three seventy five point one two. The official board proceedings are also distributed to interested parties and available on the county website. Official public record of the county board meeting is available in the county administration office. I'm good to circle it?
Yep, I'm here.
Let me do this. Uh when I get to one where I have put notes, we'll just not even talk about it, okay?
Yeah.
In the interest of time.
And unless somebody else has.
Unless somebody else, you've put a note on it, same thing and and uh of course, Dwayne, you did. Uh, room numero eight, technology. Technology will be a primary means of providing information to the county board. All county board members are encouraged to, to use a county issued email address, use a county issued computer or similar device to conduct all county business. All county board members are required to maintain personal internet service. Not use technology to respond or engage in dialogue with the quorum of the county board unless it is done, so as allowed by the open meeting.
I actually asked some questions about that.
Okay, let's not.
Since I use my own computer.
Yep.
And, yep, so I, I, I know I'm at risk of doing that, somebody could, you know, wanna go through my emails, but.
Advisory committee, room numero uh nine. Uh, not under letter A, pause. The county administrator maintains complete list of all committees, including information on member terms and applicable term limits. The county board appoints individuals to various boards, committees or commissions here and after referred to as committees. Which have been established by the county board or pursuant to Minnesota state statutes. Authority for establishment of the committees is prescribed to Minnesota statutes in a board policy. The county administrator will maintain a complete list and their underlying source of creation. Current list of all committees is available to county administrator.
I think that's okay, and I, I would guess.
Circle A.
Administrator can call it up.
Code of ethics, I have some things in here, so we don't even, I encourage you to read them, but uh I would. We, we won't go through them now. Uh public communication. Uh, let's see, room numero nine, or eleven. Public communication, individual citizen outreach. The county board believes members probably have the right to be informed of the board's process and decision. Or meetings drawn to the public. Board committee agendas are emailed to interested parties. County board encourages residents of Kennewa County to participate in all aspects of the board business, including citizen committees and advisor groups. Um continues on the next. Next page. My next page says, uh video recording broadcasting meetings. I'm not getting the connection here.
No. You're, you're just public communication, eh?
Yeah.
Yeah, and video.
Oh yeah, it's still part of our public outreach, got it.
Yep.
Um.
That's okay.
I, I'm okay. I have no notes on that. You want me to keep reading, Dwayne? I'm up at video recording broadcasting meetings in an effort to encourage transparency, provide information to public. Kennewa County will video record county board meetings and any other meeting if deemed appropriate. Vi- video recordings will be available for viewing on the county website. Public hearings. The county board is interested in securing optimal public input on matters of business. In addition to hearings required by law, public hearings in open forums may be conducted at the discretion of the board. Website, social media. Kennewa County uses its website and social media uh sites as primary tools to convey information. I'm good to circle it. I confused myself. I got a note at the bottom, but it's from a previous thing.
Well, you're okay.
Uh.
You'll say when you're not.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Letter B, responding to correspondence, uh inquiries, complaints from citizens. County board members and staff are committed to customer service and will endeavor to provide timely and efficient responsive communications to the citizens. Um, I, I wanna have a little bit of discussion over that one. So let's not circle B. Um, room numero twelve, staff roles, county administrator. Uh the county board has adopted the county administrator form of government.
Uh, I think we shouldn't circle that one then.
Yeah, let's just leave that. Yeah, I got notes anyway. So leave A, county attorney. Is an elected president, this be. Uh county attorney. The county attorney is an elected position. It is desire, desired. Uh the county attorney or designated to attend all boarding, says desired, it's a required surprise. Um, during the board meetings, the county attorney may offer advice that may be useful to the board and its deliberations pertaining to the laws and statutes. Uh governing works on the county board. Board members may also call upon the county attorney to participate in the discussions and issues being concerned.
I think it's been that way that as the, you know, uh it's desired that they do, but I think in the, in the past, I remember in the way back, but. Then uh that's up to the county attorney office. But we've been really lucky, the county attorney's done it every time, so.
So can we circle B because we wanna remain desired?
If, if the. Maybe Shane might wanna comment.
Because we could change desire to require.
Yeah, but maybe, I started thinking, he probably would like an, an option left over.
That's great.
He, he might have some major cases going on and they, they just can't get here.
Letter C, uh I've got a note in there, so we won't circle it. Um, room numero thirteen, county employee handbook policies. Um, I've got a note for that one. Never missed the end.
Alright.
So. Why don't I just stand and just send it out to all people, right?
Yes, yeah. Maybe send it to the administrator for dissemination.
And with the intent to, you know, that hopefully that everybody will get a chance to read to it. And they'll, they'll understand where we came from. And then they can make that decision that do they wanna add more to the discussion, we get back and then we don't have to have another meeting to go over this whole thing.
Should I just, just, just miss original documents to the administrator?
Yeah, or not. Yeah, we can do it that way. So you don't have to scan it in.
I'm just saying, I'm assuming that.
Yeah, I'm just doing. Yeah, and hopefully, and we can have this conversation, hopefully, on those that aren't here today. We'll be able to go so we don't have to uncircle a whole bunch of them. Um, but which would have.
And if they want someone to circle that, you know, that's why, you know, that's, that's.
In order to be completely transparent, that option is available. Alright guys, uh now I'm going over to.
Yeah.
The press invited to.
Oil and wine B? Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that right, Robin?
It's at Robins Island, uh there's a four season.
I don't know if it's included.
Four season shop.
Oh, is there a lunch, I assume?
I think there is. It's called lunch.
Cause we had to.
Yeah, and we have a board. It is published, but we will have a board on that.
Well, thank you.
So we'll see what they're, thanks for keeping the note.